All right, I will call to order the Haywood County Board of County Commissioners meeting for May 15th, 2017, and ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to meet as commissioners to do the county's work, give us knowledge to do what's best for our citizens, pray for both domestic and international peace, we ask for the season of violence across the world. In your name we pray. Amen.
All right, I'd like to thank everyone for being here this evening. The first thing we do at each meeting is ask for public comments. If anybody wants to make a public comment, they're welcome to do so. We'll start that at this time. I don't have anyone who has signed up. If anyone likes to come forward, we would ask that you limit your comments to about three minutes. And I'll open that up now. Okay, seeing no one wants to make any public comment tonight, we'll go to constituent concerns. Mike, do you have any constituent concerns?
Nothing except to just say how beautiful the weekend was and what a wonderful Sunday to celebrate our mothers.
I don't have anything. Actually, Stonie and Ira have taken care of them, and I appreciate all they do.
Okay.
I don't have anything.
The only thing I've got is I'd like to remind everybody of the fallen officer thing we have here on this coming Thursday, so I'd like for the public to be informed about that. That's a real good thing, and I'd like for everyone to know.
Okay, the fallen officer ceremony, and that is at 5:00?
It's 5:30. It's on May 25th.
May 25th.
Oh, it's the 25th. Sorry about that. I thought it's Thursday.
May 25th, though, at what time is that?
5:30. 5:30.
5:30, and it's right here. Is that right?
It will be right here on that day.
Right out in front of the historic courthouse.
And it originally was scheduled for the other day, but we had another event come up.
Okay. I have to change my calendar.
Okay. All right. Next, we'll move to administrative agency reports, and we've got Julie will come forward, the Vaya Health physical monitoring report.
What you have here is the quarterly report that Vaya Health is required to send to me, and I'm required to report it to you. If you'll look on the first page of budget to actual revenues and expenses through March 31st, and this is the quarter that ended March 31st, 2017, they have revenues of $288,504,108, which is about 91% of their budget. Their expenditures are $291,969,444, which is about 92% of their budget. Their net operating income versus negative is actually a negative $3,465,339.
Okay. Commissioners, have any questions? Julie. All right, thank you, Julie. Next, we'll have discussion, adjustment to agenda. Does anybody have any, want to have any discussion about the agenda or any adjustment? I have one item. Okay. What I'd like to do is add number 10 to new business, and that would be a request approval of appointment to the Haywood Community College Board of Trustees. We just did interviews, and so we'll make an appointment. That'll be item number 10. Okay, with that, we will move to the consent agenda. The first item on consent agenda is request approval of May 1st, 2017, regular meeting minutes. Does anyone have any additions, deletions, or changes to those minutes? Okay? If not, we'll move to request approval of April 2017 refunds, releases, amendments, and discoveries. Judy Hickman's with us, our tax assessor. Good evening, Judy.
Good evening. I'm requesting the approval of the releases, refunds, discoveries, and adjustments for April of 2017.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions about those? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Next is request approval of April 2017 tax collections update. We've got our tax collector, Mike Matthews, with us. Evening, Mike.
Good evening, Commissioners. Our current year-to-date collections as of April 30th, we're at 95.75%. That's $37,245,278. And the delinquent balance that we're carrying right now is $2,600,550.
Okay. Commissioners, have any questions? Mike?
No.
All right, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we've got a request approval of budget amendments. Julie, you've got several, and I'll let you describe each one as you go through them.
I have quite a handful tonight. The first one is a special revenue fund budget amendment. These are amounts for our special districts. We've got a road service district, a fire service district, and a sanitary service district, and the revenues that we are collecting for them are coming in a little higher than we expected, and we have to turn around and send that money to those districts, so we're increasing the amount. The total is $691,259, but that's across all the fire departments, all the road districts, and the sanitary district.
That is like increases in property tax, or real property, personal property stuff that's coming in over what we budgeted.
Yes, it really is. And in fact, when we budget the numbers for those departments, we actually are using numbers that are about a year older than they should be, but we have some requirements on how we budget that we can only use a percent last year collected, so we tend to budget a little bit on the low side. So when they come in higher, we of course have to make an adjustment.
And just for public knowledge, that money is additional monies that's been collected, and it has to come in and reflect in our budget as an increase in the budget as it goes out to those particular entities.
You're exactly right, and it's in a separate fund from our general fund. It's in special revenue funds, so it doesn't get mixed with ours, but we account for it separately.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions, Commissioners? Okay, Julie?
The next budget amendment is a health and human services. This is a work-first Southwestern Child Development Center daycare increase. This is federal and state money that is reimbursed to us after we pay these amounts. The amount is $159,657, and this is an amount that has been told to our social services department that they'll be receiving to pass on for child development.
Okay. Commissioners, have any questions about that? All right, Julie?
All right, the next one is again, social services. This is a $6,076 grant, and it's money that is for the ATTANF program. It's for child welfare program improvement resources, and this is money that needs to be spent by the end of this month, so we put it on a budget amendment so that the department can actually take advantage of that extra money.
Okay. Any questions?
That is a grant, Craig?
Yes, it is. It's funding. It's kind of like flow-through funding. You can call it a grant. We call it grants reimbursement, whatever. It's not county taxpayer dollars, and that's what you were getting.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
That's exactly right. Ready for the next one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the next one is also health and human services. This is public health. This is $20,000 in additional funding. It's funding coming in for the health department for the customization of electronic health record system.
Questions about that one? All right.
All right, I have another one for you. This is also social services. This is a $40,000 reallocation. What social services is doing is they have some money in the public assistance foster care line item that they were not spending as they thought they were, so they've got additional money there. They would like to move that money into a capital outlay motor vehicle line item so that they could purchase a vehicle and share the cost between the health department and social services. And what that is going to do is affect the revenues that are coming in. What I'm doing here is reducing the public assistance reimbursement and increasing the reimbursements for other programs for social services to cover this.
Okay. You have any questions about that? All right, Julie?
All right, and the last one, you'll remember last board meeting, we brought you a Juvenile Crime Prevention Council additional revenue budget amendment. We have another one this time. This is a program, the particular program tonight is the Aspire Program, and they have received money for some extra equipment, I think some software and some equipment for their program for kids at work. The county would like, they would like for the county to match the 20% grant that they're receiving from the JCPC program. So what I have here is I have the money that's coming in to flow through as well as the grant money, I'm sorry, the match money, the 20% from the county, and I have taken that from, it's actually within the JCPC program where we had some funding that we are not going to be using, so we've got the money sitting there that we can use for this 20% grant.
Okay. Any questions about that, Commissioners? Okay. All right, thank you, Julie. All right, if there's no other discussion about the consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So move.
Okay. Motion seconded, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes unanimously. Okay, next, we'll move to old business. We've got a request approval of resolution for the sale of property located 450 Pigeon Street to the Pigeon Community Development Center in the amount of $1. Ira Duff.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and members of the public. It is my privilege to present to unite this resolution. Whereas Haywood County, the county, previously acquired a surplus property from the Haywood County Consolidated School System Board of Education, a certain 2.977 acre parcel of land with improvements by deed dated July 3rd, 2002, of record in deed book 529, page 524, Haywood County Registry, being parcel 8615443633, the subject property. And whereas the county subsequently entered into a lease agreement with Pigeon Community Development Club, the Development Club, LSE, dated August 19th, 2002, with the expectation that said LSE would eventually buy position to acquire title and maintain subject property. And whereas the Development Club has changed its name to Pigeon Community Development Center and is now qualified as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation, as appears of record in the corporate records of the North Carolina Secretary of State, file number C201606801786. And whereas at its regular meeting on May 1st, 2017, the Board of Commissioners agreed in open session to convey subject property to the Pigeon Community Development Center, a North Carolina nonprofit corporation, for nominal consideration pursuant to NCGS section 160A-267 and 168-279, for a public purpose and use subject to an automatic reverter of title should the center fail at any time to use or own the property for a public purpose. Now therefore be it resolved, the county does hereby agree to convey the subject property to the Pigeon Community Development Center, a North Carolina nonprofit corporation, for the sum of $1. The conveyant's subject property shall be subject to an automatic reverter of title as set forth above. The county shall comply with the provisions of North Carolina General Statute, section 168-267 and 168-279, in the conveyance of subject property. This resolution would duly, is to be duly adopted today. So that is what we have prepared. As to the legal provisions, if you have questions, I would defer those to the county attorney.
Okay, Commissioners, we discussed this at our last meeting fairly thoroughly, and we got this resolution in front of us. Does anyone have any comments or want to discuss it?
One thing I'd like to add, our commission for a clean county picked up trash in that area Saturday morning, 9 o'clock, and we did pick up on this property. We sent a crew in, so should be clean as far as litter is concerned.
The comment that I'd like to make is, you know, I want you to recognize all the people that are here that's in support of this, and you know, it's, we've got almost a full house on the left-hand side of the courtroom here, and we've got a lot of the young people that benefit from this program, I see. And so would you all like to say anything or come up and, you know, have a, or, you know, anything at all before we go further?
I think the other Bill Upton's over there. Bill, you want to come up?
Bill, you need to come up here, but they still getting us confused.
(laughing) Sorry. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak. The Pigeon Community has looked forward to this day for a long, long time, and we have a number of supporters, board members, staff, and other supporters who have, and folks who've actually attended, the public, who actually attended the Pigeon Street School, and also some recent graduates of our summer enrichment program. We would like to express our thanks and appreciation to the many supporters, donors, and partners who have helped us to reach this auspicious occasion. We would not be able to consider ownership of the Pigeon Street School without the help and consideration that we have received from you, the county commission. We thank you. And our thanks extend to former chairman Mark Schwanger. Chairman Schwanger was very supportive of our mission, and of course, we are very appreciative of Mr. Duff's assistance. Our special thanks go out to Mr. Dale Burris. I don't think we ever called Mr. Burris for help, but he didn't respond with the genuine interest to assist us. So many individuals, groups, and churches have supported us, and we hesitate to single anyone out for fear of omitting someone. They know who they are, and we hope that they know how much we appreciate what they have done for us and helped us to reach this point today. Having this support would be of no use without someone to organize and focus it to meet the center's stated objectives. That person would be our long-serving executive director, Mrs. Lynn Forney. Her dedication is inspirational. When I think back to the first time I had exposure to the center, I had to wonder how anyone could have persevered for so long. In those years before the roof was replaced, how many gallons of water did she mop up? When another rain cloud appeared and threatened, who could have blamed her for throwing up her hands and saying, "I quit"? But not Lynn. Her persistence is legendary. In trying to come up with words to describe admiration for Lynn's dedication, we can only repeat those of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., when he said, "Life's most persistent and urgent question is, what are you doing for others?" And so it is with sincere gratitude, we express our gratitude and appreciation for everybody who made this day possible. Thank you very much. (applause)
Building off of what he said, I want to say thank you for allowing us to call this a home, which has always been our home, and allowing us to provide our family and our growing family a home where we can grow. And as you can see, like was said, with the young children that are here, I myself was part of the summer program, and luckily, thanks to Ms. Lynn, I can continue helping out there. So thank you for giving me a home and then a home.
All right, thank you. Yeah, and if all of you, and obviously everyone in support, but everyone directly related to the Pigeon Community Development Club, if you could just stand up, and we'll just recognize you, and appreciate you being here.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make one more comment, that, you know, I do very much appreciate Lynn's perseverance for that building and program. You know, I know a lot of people over there, a lot of memories from many years ago, and just glad that we can do something for you all. So, thank you.
All right. With those comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution as presented by Ira in just red. So move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes unanimously.
(applause)
With that, we are going to move to new business, and I will tell you that it is going to be the presentation of fiscal year 2017, 2018 budget. So if those people that were here for that, if you don't want to stay for the budget, I'll give a couple minutes for you to leave. You're more than welcome to stay for the budget, but... (laughter)
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my privilege to present to you tonight the work of many people, many of whom are in this room, our department heads. Worked very hard and diligently to come up with requests that were reasonable, and we'll talk about those requests and where they landed. They looked hard, not just at the numbers, but also what would be needed to meet the needs of the future. I know that we started with a work session back in February where the Commissioners laid down some goals that we'll talk about, where you laid down some goals. The department heads took those seriously, and several of them here, like the sheriff's here, and Stonie Blevins over Health and Human Services is here with some of his folks. They worked hard. Kathy McClure worked with them on all the personnel matters. I also received, and every year, it amazes me how much support, knowledge, Ms. Davis, Ms. Julie Davis brings to this process, and her staff. In particular, she had some, I know Ms. Crawford works a lot closely on the matters, revising the personnel sheets, but her entire staff is great to work with. So, and in the presentation of both the message and the PowerPoint, Mr. Francis and then Ms. Stewart did an extensive amount of work. So with those thank yous, I really feel that this was a team effort to get us to this So let's take a quick look, and we talked a little bit about the budget process, starting with the meeting in February, met with all the department heads, went through April with the school system and the community college. And to give a little background, as we were working through this, we were also looking at what's happening in Haywood County from an economic standpoint. The economy is recovering. Unemployment is, was down to 4.8% in February. It was a little bit higher in January. Tourism is up significantly, and it continues to go up, and that's a very important source of revenue and funding, particularly for the occupancy tax goes back, as you know, to the Tourism Development Authority to help with different projects. And that spending is a sign the economy is recovering because people come here and visit here and spend money when the economy is recovering. Building permits were about stable, but home sales are improving significantly over the prior year. Couple of factors make me say that. Number one, the average price year-to-year was up about 3.3%. Number two, the amount of closings was up about 32% from '71 up to '94. Days on the market was down from 181 to 166. So you have, and the inventory of homes decreased from 173 in 2016 down to about 552. So you have a lot of factors there, significant factors that tell you your home sales are The board set forth goals at that first meeting. Best education for citizens of all ages, economic development, county-wide broadband, public safety, and county infrastructure. The budget does work on those goals. One, providing increased funding to the Haywood County schools, provides increased funding to the community college, provides adequate maintenance on the facilities owned by the county, provide economic development activities, takes into account review of the workforce and public safety areas, and focuses on increasing them. Continue to provide safe, convenient service in solid waste, maintain current levels of service to the public, including maintenance of current operation schedule, and this budget would have the ability for a small increase in library hours, maintain funding to community clubs, maintain the wellness center and health benefits for employees, maintain the 401K, continue the merit system, and maintains inadequate contingency to see you through. As a starting point, last year, the budget was $75,311,745. Increases over the last year. Things to remember is that the dedicated sales taxes and occupancies up. Overall, real property valuation at reappraisal was down. We had a lot of PowerPoints. I'm going to touch that briefly as we go on. Overall, voting machines are real expensive, something that we'll have to work with this year. The funding to the schools is up, and public safety needs are up. The expenditures that you'll see, and the numbers are fairly sizable, are driven by the needs of your county, and we'll talk about that. Dedicated revenue increases, these are ones that will not impact the tax rate, but they will make the budget lumber look a lot larger. So if people say, "Why is your budget so big?", your occupancy tax, basically that was collected and will be passed through, we're projecting is going to be substantially higher. The capital on your sales tax, we're projecting for HCC and Haywood County School Systems will also be, you know, up about 417. Excise room, excise tax, it's going to go from the register of deeds over to the state, about 47. So we're expecting probably about $824,000 in additional revenues that'll pass through. Some of these will do some good work, like that school capital and the occupancy tax in your community, but they aren't going to be funding your main budget stuff, and they're not what's driving the tax rate, although they are making the budget bigger. Now let's get to some things that are going to impact your tax rate. The voting machines at 890. The funding formula for the schools is going to be up $485,209, and we're proposing a pretty substantial hike for public safety, and again, we'll talk about why in a few minutes, but mainly it's the needs of the county have increased in the public safety area, and some of those will have to be taken care of. That's going to put the budget up as a grand total, $3.5 million just on those factors. So if you start at where we were a minute ago, 75.3, and you add that to it, you're already at about 78.8 in this proposed budget. And so I'll explain what goes beyond that, but right in this overview, you see the real big reasons why the budget is up, and you're seeing why we've early on said you'll need fund balance to cover some of this, and we'll talk about the rate that we feel is going to be needed to cover this. Again, revenue neutral. Again, revenue neutral, we have to explain what revenue neutral is. You don't have to adopt a revenue neutral rate. This is the rate, this is the statutory definition, more or less, is it's the tax rate is the rate that is estimated to produce revenue for the next fiscal year equal to the revenue that would have been produced for the next fiscal year by the current rate if no reappraisal had occurred. So you basically try and figure out what would that tax rate have been there if no reappraisal had occurred. A revenue neutral rate is intended to be a revenue neutral for the county as a whole, not for individual property owners. And this is where, you know, we need to do a lot of explanation. We're looking at the ad valorem, that 42-plus million dollars for the county as a whole. We're not looking at any one individual's property because, as we learned in our revow, some properties actually did go up. So whatever happens won't be neutral to those properties. If applied a revenue neutral rate, approximately 58% of our homeowners would pay more. We ran these, some of these numbers against the values, and most of those would go up $40 or less. But again, not all, because some homeowners would have had a big property increase already, but a lot of people lost value. Even if you apply the revenue neutral rate, given the revow, 42% of the property owners should pay less. The proposed budget is 79,511,717. The proposed rate is to go to revenue neutral, just under revenue neutral by a shade of 58.5 per hundred dollars of valuation, and to appropriate $2.15 million worth of fund balance. General funds expenditures are proposed to increase by $4,199,972, and we discussed earlier, right in the overview, over $3.5 million of those increases. The rest I'll discuss as we go through this. Talk briefly about reappraisal. Mr. Francis did a couple excellent presentations here and in other parts of the county on it. This is something that's required at least every eight years. The last reappraisal on Haywood County was 2011. It includes land improvements, land and improvements for residential, commercial, agriculture, and industrial, and it resets all the property values as of January 1st, 2017. The standards we've laid out, and what we're really looking for is the meaning of market value, which is just basically arms-length transaction between a willing seller and willing buyer. It's not going to count your foreclosures, and you're not setting values arbitrarily by the government. It really is a process to go through and look at what those values would be and compare. Bought some software last year that enabled a lot better comparison of all the sales in the county, so... And if I'm not mistaken, and we talked, you have some of the, a very low level of appeals, I think, because when people saw the values that were out there. Market value is not determined by the tax office, it's determined by the activity in the local market. You all didn't create the values or tell us what to, you know, the assessor's office what to put down. They're responding to what they see in actual sales. But there's a difference in the market value between 2016 and 2017 of $167,25,111. Now, this is just the top-level market value figure. It doesn't talk about adjustments and offsets and how many people have their property and land use. This is just so you could see the market value to market value number on the reappraisal. But that does impact where your revenue neutral rate comes from, because again, it's the application to the county. If we look at other counties, and this counts not just market value, but other factors in there, these are the total valuations on the county, and you'll notice Haywood, Jackson, and Macon County have more property, taxable property, more value to their property than Haywood County, and Haywood's a little above Transylvania. However, Transylvania, Macon, and Jackson have significantly smaller populations to serve. So when we're talking about a tax rate and how we set a tax rate, these two numbers are huge, because if you have fewer people to serve, you need less money to serve them. And if you have a larger tax base, because some people say, "Why does Jackson have a lower tax rate than us?", or "Why do Macon have a lower tax rate than us?", this slide explains that. They serve fewer people, and they have a bigger tax base to do it with. So therefore, your tax rate would be lower in those counties. It should be, if your people are paying attention. The other factor you have to consider is where you want your level of service set. When we look at parcels with, in average values, again, Haywood County's average value, we have 49,000 parcels, and our average value's a little lower than Macon, Transylvania, or these other counties. Tax year projected values of the overall county, again, shows you that Macon and Jackson are still projected to remain ahead of us. Average values, broken down a different way, Jackson, Transylvania, Macon, still going to be ahead of us on the average values. Tax levy by county for fiscal year, that would be, we're anticipating last, well, these are last year's numbers, we had 42 million in tax levy. That meant even though they had a lot less populations, these other counties were spending at a higher per capita rate, is reflected in this slide, average tax by population. So when you break it down that way, it looks a little bit different. So let's talk about where the money comes from. Ad valorem taxes in this year, that's your largest square, it always is. In addition, intergovernmental and local are your next two biggest pieces of those taxes. And the intergovernmental is primarily the money we're getting from the federal government, and a lot of that is in your social services and Health and Human Services area. But there is some money from the state that comes in. It's a mix of federal, state, and local revenues, and again, the biggest one is the ad valorem taxes, which is why when you have a revow that goes down, you have to talk about revenue neutral rates. We are predicting an increase in sales tax. And the breakdown of the different places that's earmarked for public school capital, community college capital, important community projects would be $9 million, is what we're predicting we'll be able to use. So it's about $500,000 increase in available sales tax revenues if we've, that we're predicting. You'll notice, and this is another sign that your economy is recovering, we're continuing to go up in those sales tax history, the projections, and the actual history. So the bottom of the U would have been back in 2010, when we actually were below $10 million in 2010, 2011, below $10 million in revenues. We're back up projecting significantly over $14 million for next year. Where's the money go? Well, the largest sectors that you're going to see would be Health and Human Services, Education, and Public Safety. And we'll talk about each of those because two of those are definitely driving this budget, along with the voting machines for election. Budget request, we had $81,639,000, or 639,965 in request. Request for 24 positions from the department heads to look at different areas. All of the positions had justifications on them. I could stand up here and talk to you about all the different requests, and they were reasonable. We do need to prioritize when you're trying to work through these things. And I'm just going to say that the priority was public safety, and you'll see why in a little bit here. Again, just because people will say, "Why are we spending this money?", or "What do we need to do?", I put in red where most of the additional dollars are going to be, to make it a little bit simpler to understand. When you get to education, the Haywood County schools, the funding formula's up 485,209. The community college, and a lot of this has to go with the public safety trading facility, this $177,000 increase they're asking for. These are the numbers they presented to you at the work session, and I'm recommending that you put those forward. Education being one of your top priorities, I'm recommending that you fully fund those. Elections, we were mandated to buy new machines eventually. Other counties have already, you know, looking down that road, but I think a lot of us are in the same boat this year looking for it, and that's $890,000 we'll need for those machines. Also in general government, this is where the health insurance, we came to you last month about health insurance and talked about that. We think you're going to need to increase at least 275 in that area to cover next year. If you add those two numbers together, this does account for most of the increase in the general government area. There are some shifts around in the way we have paid people going from contract to personnel positions. You would notice particularly in the legal area, if you were to look closely at the people, there's a couple of additional people with Mr. Killian and with Ms. Wells now being full-time employees in that area. But for the most part, that budget is fairly flat. This is also where your assessor's office is, and your collector's office, and your register of deeds. So there are some minor things there in terms of software or iPads, but it's, these are the big-ticket items right here. If we buy those voting machines, we're predicting, you know, probably you're going to have a lot of people use them based on our last few presidential election stats. The ballots cast were up over $30,000 in the last general election, or about 30,955 people cast ballots in the last general election. Central services, this budget's relatively flat. You know, mostly we're trading out one maintenance item for another, like we're going to be doing some significant maintenance at the detention facility for some boilers. We're going to be doing different IT items that were on the list that we had presented previously, but it's pretty much a flat budget of only a 1% increase. Public safety. Emergency services, this is the EMS and emergency management part of it. We're up over 11,000 EMS calls, and we're at capacity when you start to look at the numbers during the peak times, and that would be during the day. During most weekdays would be where that peak time is, starting about 10 o'clock in the morning, running into the evening. And being at capacity means that you don't want to wait till you're overcapacity in the public safety area before you make an adjustment, and it's time to make an adjustment. In order to do that, this year, we normally would have recommended remounting three of your ambulances with safety lifts. In order to do that and to bring another ambulance into service during peak times, we, I'm going to recommend three rather than two, that's going to be up about 320,000. The safety lifts are going to be critical. We have one ambulance with a safety lift. These allow for a safer loading of the patient and will decrease the stress on the workers who are attempting to lift a patient into the back of an ambulance, which should reduce your injuries. That's a high time that your workers have a chance of injury. So we do strongly recommend the safety lifts with those ambulances. In order to pull off adding this peak time ambulance, when we looked at options with the director Greg Schuping and also with Travis Donaldson, did a lot of work on this, they think they can pull it off with part-time wages and realignment of staff with about $46,000 additional dollars, which was a good number. In addition, a special wellness program for emergency services to help them, that we've talked with the hospital, and they would be willing to work with this public safety group for a set price and provide them with ergonomic training, with reviews of fitness, with some trainings on fitness. My prediction is this would be money well spent because of the type of work that they do, and if we can, working with the hospital, avoid one injury through proper fitness and training, you're going to save money in the long run, because we are self-insured on workers' comp. That's emergency medical services side of it. The other thing that we want to do is we want to recommend updating our early warning notification system. This, you know, reverse 911 is good, and we have some other systems that are okay, but as we go into having more visitors and more people working through cell phones and other things, we really need to pay some attention to being able to push out and having a stronger notification system for public safety. Communications, these are your telecommunications. Call volume, call volume has significantly increased in the last few years, and these are the numbers that came out of their computer system. It's gone from 106,000 back in 2014 to 140,000, and the number of calls being dispatched has increased. Now, someone said, asked me when they'd heard some of these numbers, they said, "Is there some duplication there?" And the answer is, "These are unique calls", is what I've been told. Now, some of them may be about the same incident. For example, if there's a wreck on a highway, 20 people may call it in, and they still have to answer all those calls. If they don't, one of those calls may be a heart attack in Canton, and they can't exactly blow it off. So here, we are recommending two additional staff, again, to cover, that would allow you one extra operator for peak times, 12 hours a day. That's what two staff does, it puts one more person in a seat for those 12 hours. And just to keep up with the call volume. And I think I, having spoken with both Greg Schuping and Greg Christopher and looked at the data myself, I think we'd all agree that this is probably your number-one personnel thing you need to do is write on this one, as far as increased positions. So when you, we had 25 positions in different areas, this rose right to the top of the Now let's go over to the detention. The detention officers drove over 271,216 miles, about 85,000 more than they drove in 2015. They're asking, they had asked for a number of positions, they'd asked for this detention lieutenant, but also for a couple of transport personnel. After review, we prioritized the, put a priority on getting the telecommunications on the slide before for 911, so that we can continue to provide a good service in 911, and would do the detention lieutenant, recommend that position so that they can make sure they have both coverage on the shifts and the ability, this person can also, if you have this person stepping in and able to do that, they can work a little more on the transport side of it. Some increased inmate expenses in that budget, detention van, and radio communications in that facility. Sheriff's office, replacing cameras and adding some body cameras, the sheriff is looking at that as possibility, but these are the car cameras we need to replace. They're getting at a end-of-service and a lot are broken, and also looking at replacing the tasers. In order to keep the sheriff's fleet up, we're recommending you're going to need to replace at least six vehicles this year, and probably every year from now on, if you add some more, I mean, otherwise you're going to be back in the place. We're still there with a lot of vehicles that are well over 100,000 miles, but this is a number that you're going to have to look at every year, six vehicles, if you're going to keep the fleet up. That's what we did last year as well. After review, one of the things the sheriff had advised you all of in your work session, and I did look at the numbers, and we looked at how other counties do their numbers in terms of staffing, we looked at how many people we have. You're going to need four patrol deputies, this is going to rise pretty high on your list soon, I would think, just as a county, and the need for the coverage in our county. They're presently responding to 26,572 calls, which is about 1279 per deputy. When you look at mid-sized counties, and you look at the list of them, we're on the low end of calls per deputy, meaning... end of calls per deputy, meaning that most counties have fewer calls per deputy. We're not, we're not really beating the band there, and you could add another patrol deputy to each shift, and that would, that would do a lot to level you out in terms of what they handle each shift. Again, there were a lot of positions that when we looked at in the budget and we had to make our priority list, had a lot of strong justification. Accomplishments in public safety and animal services, I just, you know, we constantly get some questions about animal services, so I put some information in here about what they've accomplished. I just want to highlight one major thing, which is maybe for the first time ever, your live release rate popped up above 90% for a year. And that's a, that's a pretty big accomplishment, not to be underestimated. Overall public safety increase, $1,319,331. And again, when you look at about $4 million increase and the other explanations, this is, this is a huge chunk of it right here. Economic and physical development, Greater Haywood Chamber, I'm recommending that that agreement continue. Project funding of $60,000. There was a reorganization in planning and the tourism budget increasing. Again, those numbers are not really major drivers of the bottom line for, for the rate, but does include some project funding. There is a bill in the General Assembly, the Bright Futures Act, and, and some other things with regard to broadband that we're going to keep an eye on how they play out, which would, to some extent, determine what we're able to do on the local level as a county as opposed to a municipality. Health and Human Services, they managed to do a budget that had fewer county dollars to maintain the level of services. There's been an increase in Medicaid applications over 30% since 2011. You now have 14,538 people in your county on Medicaid. There's been no new staff in a long time, and in looking back over the numbers for social services from 2006 to what we're recommending is we're recommending a staffing level for total positions that's equivalent to what you, you know, it's within one of what you would have had in 2006 and equivalent to your 2008 staffing levels. All the other years, including the present year, the staffing's been down, but that 14,000 number actually represents about double what was going on back in 2006, and they really haven't had a significant increase in staffing. And the system they're using is not any simpler. One would think, and for the most part, the computer age has made it simpler to do your work, however, there is a system called NCFAST that made it more complicated to do the work that they have to do. Plus, just the determinations and the laws in Medicaid have complicated over the years. So they have a more complex system, more people on it, and your staffing has remained the same. This should help make sure that we, that, that Health and Human Services makes sure the right people are eligible for Medicaid. Cultural and recreation, Town in Canton asked for $50,000 for the pool. We are recommending $25,000 this year, and if you, depending on how things go in the next year, look at that as possible addition. Library, increased usage, recommending an additional $30,000 in temp labor to help increase hours. May not increase hours as much as everybody wanted, but you should, for $30,000, be able to do something and make some increases in temporary labor. Recommending some collections increase of $10,000. The reason that, when you look at Parks and Rec, their, their budget is actually bigger. The reason it is not in red is that's based on fees for participation. So the budget number is there, but if the fees don't come in, if they don't get the people to participate in their new programs, they won't get the money. So that's, that's kind of what they're anticipating, hoping to get an increase in participation in some of their athletic activities. Overall budget is up significantly. The top three red items account for about half of that. The other part of this, library increase, didn't mention it here, but it is one of the factors. The overall cost for their IT, particularly for their monthly usage fees from carriers have gone up significantly, and, and that's a, a cost that we're having to look at because they have a couple of different ways they have to connect and a couple of different On to solid waste. Recommending the availability fee remain the same, and these are the different budgets that we're putting out there. Capital projects and other, that is the, where we are putting the money so that in about a year, and y'all hear about assessment of corrective measures on June, so I'm going to go through this pretty quickly, but that's where the money's going to work on the, the project at Francis Farm and also have our long-term contingency. These are your, we upgraded some facilities, currently upgrading Crusoe, Jonathan Creek, Beaver Dam, Jones Cove, Bethel. We have fencing, signage, asphalt repairs, big changes at Moonee Cove and 209 that we've gone over significantly here. That was the expansion of Moonee Cove and Crabtree 209, so those sites will also be coming online. We did a lot of work in convenience centers this past year. And again, we'll have the assessment of corrective measures, go over that a lot in June on the nine different corrective technologies, and people understand what we're going to be working on with the money there. Summary of recommendations by fund, general budget 79,511,717. Special revenue fund for emergency telephone 426,026. Solid waste 6,182,987. Road service districts, fire districts 3,696,827. Geneska Sanitary District 224,500. Law enforcement separation 65,000. Southwest Child Development Center Fund 3,500,000. And what we do at Southwestern is they have the contract, and we've worked with them for many years to handle all of the subsidy for childcare in our area, then internal service funds. Debt service transfers, debt service is actually going to decrease. An increase in dedicated HCC and HTS, the number's 407 on another slide. There's another matter thrown in there that, that brings it up to 507 on that, and contingency is 311,000. Total budget 9,466,24. So if someone says, what happens? We don't want to go to revenue neutral. We want to make sure that you do everything you can to keep the tax rate the same and just have everybody in the county pay less money. And I, I know there's the ever-popular, just cut your budget by X percent, throw out the percentage, and you'll probably hear that next year, we'll just cut services by X percent. Well, there's real-world impacts for those decisions, you, we, we can do those, and this is a recommended budget, and y'all will have to, to say what to do, but we've put out here what you could do. You could go from six sheriff's vehicles to three sheriff's vehicles and put sheriff's fleet back, start to put it back into a condition it was a few years ago, which was not very good and which we've tried to work through. You could take out the cameras, and by not replacing those cameras, there was some additional for body cameras, but you could remove the, some other equipment from them and the cameras on the cars. You would, not all the cars have working cameras on them that don't need to be replaced. You don't have to fund the Canton pool. You could take out one less ambulance and start to pay operating from fund balance. Not a very wise use of money to pay operating from fund balance. You can get away with that probably a little bit for one year, and one year we can dip that much into fund balance because you're going to have another big debt roll off next year. And you're basically saying, when you look at budgets two and three and four years out, you look for what kind of things are coming off in debt service and what's likely to be sustainable. You're going to have to cut services significantly if you go this route, though, or you're not going to be sustainable about maybe one, maybe two years, the chickens will come home to roost if you don't cut services. You cut the peak time staff ambulance, you take, you basically would be saying, you know what? We believe there's going to be no increase in EMS service, so we're not going to build any more capacity. But that's, you have to have that assumption because if you don't build the capacity, the other alternative is to say that we believe when that comes next year, if we go from 11,000 to 12,000, it's okay if we run out of ambulances. So, but if people in the public want to know what would happen, these are the kind of things that would happen. You could remove the two telecommunicators this year, and if your call volume goes up anywhere close to what it's gone up the last few years, you're going to have some problems. You could remove the detention lieutenant, that would keep a significant pressure going on the, the detention facility. You could reduce Community College by 20,000. You could take out the Medicaid workers and hope that Medicaid doesn't go up anymore and that volume errors don't occur. There's some money in there to repair the register of deeds books, you could take that out. You could remove the fitness program for EMS, that's a newer program, and that's one of those things where we believe that investing some money now will save you some injuries down the road. But again, that's, that's something that could be put to value. You could cut transportation and senior services. You could remove detention vehicles out of there, and they could drive the old van and hope that the mileage doesn't go up. You could remove the governing body minutes, there's some software in there for governing body and some audiovisual upgrades for the computer in the back. You could remove the land record iPads, that's actually something that they're trying to increase to do a better job in the field and work with. You could just cut the library hours, although I would warn you on that one, there is a survey, y'all hear more about when they present, that says that most of your citizens that took that survey, a, a strong percentage wanted increased hours, so, but that's a decision. You could reduce service like Parks and Rec or Meals on Wheels. You could cut the Canton Library, we had some money to, to fund some repairs to their parking lot, and you could, you know, we could, we could make more cuts to come up with 400,000 more dollars. But your staffing levels, when you look at them and you control for the fact that you outsourced solid waste, have, have been pretty consistent since 2008. So you actually have to cut services, and your service demands have gone up a lot since 2008. So you're actually going to have to cut a service if you're going to be sustainable and lower your budget. And that's something, you can look over everything, and I, I've told you some of the statistics we've been looking at. I know that Health and Human Services keeps a lot of statistics to show what's happening there. But that, that's why I am recommending revenue neutral. This is the reverse side of that. You could go down this road, but I would not recommend it. And why do we need fund balance? We've talked about reduced county dollars due to the revow, and we've talked about the increased expenditures. And the bottom line is, you have some, you have a couple of big-ticket items in there that are not going to be recurring, like those voting machines, and you also have the ability, when the Justice Center rolls off, that's going to balance out some of your things. So if you hit fund balance, you would not need to go higher to meet these needs that I have shown you in public safety in your rate, and I would recommend, you know, one way to do it is fund balance. I don't think you're going to put yourself in a bad financial position in the long run if you did that once. You could not keep going to the well, though. That, that's the thing. It's pretty much a one this year, and primarily because you're losing the Justice Center debt next year. So from here, we've now presented the budget. Thank you for your attention. On June 1st, we have a public hearing. Then on June 5th, we have the work session. June 19th, we have consideration of voting on the budget. If anybody from the public wants to send comments, they can send them to comments@haywoodnc.net. They can mail them to our office, they can drop them off, they can come to one of these meetings and talk, either at the public hearing, if they can't make that, at the public comment sessions before each of these meetings. So there's lots of opportunities for the public to present you with feedback. I'll leave that up in case anyone wants to see the email.
Okay. Ara, thank you for that presentation.
Commissioners, any questions of Ara right now, want to discuss any of this?
Just, it's a lot to swallow right now, but anyway, just to make it clear, this voting machine situation, we've about kicked that as far down the road as we can, and this is a mandate that was sent down from the legislature for a requirement that they're putting or requiring that the, the, the machines do, and so therefore, that goes into effect this next.
You're going to need, those machines have to be tested before a certain period, yes. We've kicked the can, and I've talked to Robbie and backed out the calendar, and you, you need to buy them this next budget year so that you'll be able to meet the testing requirements and have everything set to go for the mandate the following year.
Yeah, but this is something we have to do.
That's not optional, yes.
Yes, that's, that's what I want to make clear.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a have-to.
That's right. Even though we've probably got voting machines that have worked properly, they're getting close to the end of their life.
We do have older.
Could still function for a little while, but it's not an option for us. We're having to do this.
Yes. I, I have talked with Robbie, and we reviewed the, reviewed the matters and reviewed the timetable, or I should say for the benefit of the people at home, the Director of Elections, Mr. Endman. We've talked extensively about the timetable, and this is, you're, you're at the time where you're going to need to buy them this budget year so that they can do the testing of them, get them placed, get the order, get everything in place and all that before their, your, your deadline's up for the statute.
And supposedly, the, the, the situation is, is that, that the state now is going to start requiring right away a paper ballot backup, and these new machines give us that.
Yes.
Where we're at now, even though we have a backup, it's not, doesn't meet the criteria that the legislature mandated.
That is correct. The machines we have now do not meet that paper ballot backup criteria, and these new machines, there are many models that have been approved. I think only one has fully been approved, and there, there are just a few models they're even looking at for approval, but the, the new machines we looked at were the approved model and actually had the chance to review those models and see the, they actually do print out, Ms. Davis and I were actually in there looking at them with elections, they actually do print out a paper ballot that is counted and, and kept. So there is actually an approved machine that we're looking at. So that's why, when we're giving you the price, that's real, that's the quote he has for these machines and what you're going to need pretty much, so.
Yeah, and, and also, this has been something that's been out there for the last couple of years, and it was required to already be in place by now, but they actually gave a little bit of a extension, and that extension is just about over.
The, we are past the original date, and we are working in the extension. They, they did that fairly early on, I think, within a, a year of the original passage of the legislation they put out there for counties as an extension. So this would be the, the timetable, but we do not anticipate that they're going to do that again. There was nothing in the General Assembly before crossover that would have extended this timetable. So we're, if you're going to meet the timetable to have your machines in time within a year, you're going to need to buy them this budget year to get them tested and get everything done so that they can be in place the following year, so for your timetable. So this is, this is as far as you can go. Other Otherwise, you risk being out of compliance.
Well, I wanted that to be clear.
Yes.
Our review, I mean, it's all gonna come down to two points for Commissioners to make a decision. The revenue neutral, if you review that again, I think we all know what using fund balance is to fill in, but explain again the revenue neutral. To me, that's the bottom line on what we're gonna all have to consider in deciding which way to go.
Okay. Can't get back there on the PowerPoint, so, let me see, the revenue neutral tax rate. I'm gonna try and make the, put this in some different language. Most of the money the county has comes from property taxes, and the property taxes we're looking at are your real property taxes. And so, the General Assembly said, you know what, so that you don't, so that you can show people, whether they're really getting a rate increase or a decrease, you have to put out a rate every time you do a real property evaluation that shows them how much money the county would have collected if you didn't do that property revaluation. So that's essentially what we're looking at on the ad valorem. What would that rate be to get the same amount of ad valorem money for the county as a whole if you didn't do that revow? It's not a mandate that you go to this revenue neutral, and again, the revenue neutral is for the county as a whole. Every individual property owner, only about six thousand of all of them that were looked at, kept their property values the same. They either went up, or they went down, and most of them went down. So, for the individuals, each individual story's gonna be different, but for the county as a whole, we look at, okay, we have to determine what the county of the whole would have had as income off of property taxes if, and set a rate, 'cause property taxes are basically a function of how much you collect in that thing, is your rate times the value of your county. The value of our county, as we discussed, multiple billions of dollars, and it went down a little bit. So at the end day, what is the figure that would give you the same amount of income? So, some counties choose to, like, you know, Buncombe, they had a discussion, their property values went way up. In fact, they went up almost as much as the entire value of our county, if you start to look at the numbers, what they proposed in their revow. They, you know, they added almost the entire value of our county to their revow. So when they set their rate, and this is why you really do it, their new property values times the rate that would give them the same amount of money, they actually set it a little higher than revenue neutral. And that figure was out there to show, show what happened. Most counties were not so lucky. Buncombe's done some amazing things to, to grow an economy over a long haul, and they've got a lot of wonderful things. Most of us have worked pretty good and saw the general economy hit us. So you have a lot of counties around us, and property values went down, and accordingly, their rates had to increase to make sure that the counties had, as a county whole, the same amount of revenue to run. So if you choose not to go into the revenue neutral rate, what you're saying is, we're just gonna have less money from our, from our biggest source of income. If you go more than the revenue neutral rate, you're saying, we're gonna have more money from our biggest source of income than we would have had anyway. If you go less, you're saying, we're gonna have less money than we would have had, had we not done this revow, from our biggest source of income. Some counties choose to do that a little bit, for a variety of reasons. But that's basically, it's the rate for comparative purposes, 'cause that's what we're doing, is making a comparison with what we would have had versus what we're doing, so people know what kind of, whether this rate increase is really a tax increase, or whether, even if my rate goes down, if it's, if it's really a decrease or not, is happening. And there's a formula, and we use the formula that's laid down by the local government commission to help determine what our revenue neutral rate is.
Let me follow up, just for my information. If we had not done revow, based on the monies that we would get, keeping it the same, would that be enough money to satisfy the budget as it stands now, we're presenting?
If we had not done the revow.
Right.
Then you would be.
You kept everything the same.
Should be. Maybe 'cause that's what revenue neutral is.
You'd probably been okay.
But you still would need, you still would need to hit the fund balance, if you hit the fund balance pretty heavy, yes.
That's 'cause of the voting machines.
The voting machines and some of those other things, yes.
Voting machines, you still had to hit fund balance.
You'd still be hitting the fund balance regardless, but yeah, you wouldn't be changing the rate.
But, but the voting machines, it's a one-time, they're not reoccurring, so it's...
It's a one-off, and you have some other capital needs in there. But to keep the rate, your public safety, your public safety driver, with that being that big, and your, your school budget increase, you look at a penny on the tax rate, it's roughly seven hundred, seven hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, or something like that. That's close, going off the top of my head. So when you add four hundred and eighty-five thousand on the school system as an increase, that's gonna take up a lot of what your sales tax increase would have been. It's a little over five hundred thousand. You popped up four hundred and eighty-five, and then you start to add up one hundred and seventy-seven for the community college, you start to look at eight hundred and ninety thousand in the voting machines, and soon you start to get up, you have a million, one point three million thousand, we're recommending in Public Safety. And those are kinda drivers that are gonna be there, not just with the revenue neutral rate, but what happened to us is, your overall income from property taxes goes down. At the same time, your need for services is going up, and that, that's kinda what happened.
So we'd need fund balances.
You'd need the fund balance anyway.
Well, fund balance, if we kept everything the same.
If you, if you had kept the rate the same and no revow, you'd still need that fund balance.
Yeah, to me, revenue neutral is as if, is as if the fund, there were no revow. In other words, fifty-eight-five, actually, that's a little, that's a touch lower than revenue neutral, I think Ara told me. But fifty-eight-five is revenue neutral, as if we never had a revow, and that's what...
Right.
To maintain where we were.
The county as a whole is taking in the same dollars as it would if we didn't, if we had not done a revow and kept the rate the same, and that's what fifty-eight point five is. You know, Buncombe County, like you just said, I think their values went way up, they were looking at a revow neutral of ten cents deduction, and they only went down five. That's a tax increase, even though it's a rate decrease, it's a tax increase. Our rate increase is actually a level, it's, it's neutral. So if we do revenue neutral, we'll, we're level. And I've always supported revenue neutral, whether it went, whether it goes up or down. I know, you know, in oh, in oh-six, we did a revow, and it went way up, and we, the rate, we lowered the rate to revenue neutral. And I'm not, I don't have a problem to do the fund balance, because, I'll give you an example, this is the first year, according to the graph, that our sales taxes is above two thousand and seven, and that Julie, you know, her own graph. So, we used to, before two thousand and seven, it was common to take money out of fund balance, 'cause you don't wanna keep more in your fund balance than you need, you know. I'm glad we've got it to the level, and it wouldn't hurt for it to be a little bit higher, but you don't, you know, taking a little bit of money out of fund balance to help your community, I think's okay, as long as it's growing, and it hasn't grown until recently. And so, I don't have a problem using the fund balance, because we used to always do that before the economic downturn from, in two thousand and eight. So that, to me, is not, it's, it's not, you know, to me, it's, it's not a problem for me, because I think that was a normal way that we did business then, and we've been able to not do it, and now that we are doing it, I guess it's something that's different, but it's still, you're looking at, like I say, two thousand and seven, we just now got above two thousand and seven in sales tax revenue, just now. I mean, this is ten years later. So, I'm happy with, I'm okay with, you know, tapping the fund balance a little bit, and it did grow three million dollars last year, so. And also, I was looking, I was looking at the tax rate, the fifty-eight point five, and last year, our rate was five-six-six, I think, something like that, and that was twenty-fifth lowest in the state, which meant seventy-five counties were higher, if I counted it right. I might be off one or two. And if, if we'd have done fifty-eight point five last year, we would have been twenty-eighth, and there would still be seventy-two counties with a higher rate than we, than we have. And I think we've been being good stewards, based on the overall tax rate of the whole state. I feel like we're, you know, at least we're not above half. So I, you know, we're just going from twenty-fifth to twenty-eighth, and who knows with the, you know, we might be back to twenty-fifth when, when all the other counties have their rates, you know, turned in, so. But that would be my comments, on the, and I'm, I've always supported revenue neutral. It's not a tax increase, some people may have an increase, some people have a decrease. For the county, it's, it's level, it's, it's just the same. And if you're in Buncombe County, your rate's going down five cents, and you're getting a tax increase, because it should go down ten cents. So that's the way we need to describe that, is, if you lived in Buncombe County, you'd be getting a tax increase. My brother lives over there, so, he's not looking too good, but, but I'm, I'm okay with revenue neutral.
Ara, I know that you said some of our debt services will be coming off, I don't know if that's next year or two years down the road. Do you have any idea how many and how much money that'll be?
Next year, you're looking at about a million and a half coming off. That's what I'm talking about, which is why, when, when you do a budget, you have to look multiple years out, and that's why we looked at that, because you're trying to adjust what's gonna be fair for this group here. You can just look one year, and you have to make sure you're balanced in your one year, but if you're gonna add positions, you have to say, well, what's the impact two, three years down the road for those positions? Are we gonna be able to afford this? Well, we're hitting fund balance pretty heavy. And one of the things that's gonna make this affordable, if the economy continues to recover, is you roll off the Justice Center, you're doing a one-hit on eight hundred and ninety thousand, so, those are the kinda things we were looking at down the road, but it is, that was the main one I'm talking about rolling off.
I was just looking, and you know, if we have some money available there, and can pull, as Kevin mentioned, from the fund balance, how that would balance out. Be honest, I'm struggling a little bit with revenue neutral, even though I know there's a lot of good needs here. I'm just trying to justify the revenue neutral part to myself, so. I know that, I think you said later on, we'll be getting copies of this, is that correct?
Oh, yes, you have copies of the whole budget.
I don't know if I want the whole thing or not, you're very shocked, man.
And I, and I can understand, that's why I went to the details of what you're doing, and you think, down the road, if you don't do the revenue neutral, and you don't look at lowering some of your service demands, you know, we were in positions where we bought one or two or three shares vehicles. Then you're gonna have to come back and buy more of that, probably a year or two down the road to bring it up. And if you, if you don't do the revenue neutral rate, what happens is, you start to look, don't just look year one, it means you're choosing to reduce your income, or raise taxes next year, or, or raise taxes the next year, or keep your income lower. The only way to do this lower is to reduce your services. You can reduce your service demands by either A, keeping the same amount of services available and delivering them in not as good a fashion, send out old vehicles, old ambulances, or B, just cutting the number of services. You cut back one of your programs, that you're legally allowed to cut back. But, but down the road, those are the things, and that's the struggle you have to do, and that's what you have to think, do we wanna keep these level of services? But if you think in terms of services and what you wanna accomplish, then, then that's where the priority, to me, is. If that helps you with your struggle, I mean, that's the struggle, to me, is where you, where you want that, as a commission, to go with the level of service.
I, and I feel like, I think the board feels like, we've gotten the level of services back up to where it needs after two thousand and eight. We gotta be careful that we leave ourselves some leeway, because at some point in time, we're gonna have to address salaries, you know, whether future supplements, county employees giving back their benefits that were lost, so. And I guess we hoping that the, we stuck with revow for four to six years, so we gotta hope that the tax rates goes up for us. That's about the only way we gonna be able to do a little extra to keep our employees in Haywood County.
Ara, I do appreciate the comparisons that you made with other counties, just for everyone's information, I mean, it's kinda revealing to know what is going on around our counties, because we get compared to those counties, and our employees look at those counties, and our constituents say, what about the tax rates in other counties? And so, it's important for you to point out, and you did, the fact that our county, Haywood County, has less of a value as far as our entire real property than, of course, a whole lot less than Buncombe, but even less than Macon and Jackson Counties. And so that's, sometimes that's a little bit startling and surprising to people because of the size of our county, especially our population, that in fact, the real property that we have here has a lesser value than Macon and Jackson do. And so therefore, they can, they can actually tax less as far as a tax rate goes, but at the end of the day, per person, they're paying more in taxes than, than Haywood does. And so, I think that's important for people to know, that, that we try to keep our taxes low, even in the face of having a lower value in real property. To me, when it gets down to it, and I think you, you kinda made a statement there at the end, it's what kinda county do we wanna live in? I mean, what kinda county do we, as the Board of Commissioners, want this county to be, and what, what do our constituents expect? And then, when I, when I look at that, and I try to simplify it, so that even I understand and the constituents understand, it's almost like, okay, what do you have to do to maintain your own house? And what, you, you always, you have to make maintenance to it, sometimes you have to buy a new one, and there's always upkeep, and if you don't keep it up, then it deteriorates. And the same thing with your car, when we're talking about the fleet, the cars that we're replacing here, you know, you, you have a car and you have to replace it, it gets old, you have to replace it, you have to fix it. When we're dealing with the county, you just multiply that by buildings and cars, that if you don't continue to maintain and replace those and take care of those things, they're going to deteriorate, and you're not gonna like what you see, and we're gonna put the weight on someone else's shoulders down the road, that they're gonna have to replace those things. I think it's the same thing with our employees as well. And I'm a little concerned that we're not doing enough for our employees with, with this budget, or at least the ones that are, that are making less, not the, not the higher-paid employees, but the lower-paid. And, and the thing is, the cost of living for them is the same as it is for everyone else, and, and we know, and I know, I get, I get my check, the small check that I get here, but I take out the insurance on that. And sometimes I look at the employees, and I can't imagine, this is, this is their job, I've got another job, and, and so, I have other monies, but if that's your paycheck and you have to pay for your children or your wife, your wife's health insurance out of your pay, and, and then you take a little bit of retirement out of that, at the end of the day, you don't have a whole lot of money to live on. And so I'm, I am concerned about that. Taking all that into consideration, it, it's nice to be able to raise the tax rate, but then you have all your constituents you've gotta look to, that you have to explain that to as well. And, and that's difficult. I mean, I'm at the tax office, waiting in line for a deed to get stamped every now and then, and, you know, I see someone come in that's making payments on their, on their tax bill, and they pull out that cash, and that's hard-earned cash, that they're paying down towards that tax bill. But at the same time, I look at the employees that are struggling as well, so, that's what it, that's what it means to where we're gonna, you have to get down to what you want your county to look like, and, and how much can you do? Because it's gonna be tough, either way, it's gonna be tough on the employees, it's gonna be tough to maintain, but it's also gonna be tough on the taxpayer. And you just have, you have to look at all of that and make the best decision you can, and, and not everyone's gonna be happy, happy with that decision. And I think that, that with this budget, you know, we've done that. There are a lot of other things that you have cut out of this budget, that our department heads, and we've got, I don't know, maybe ten, about ten, eight departments heads here total. 10, about 10, eight departments heads here total. You know, they try to do the best they can for the county. And, you know, most of the time, they try to look at their budget. And then they know it's going to be cut, but I think they, they try to manage that budget the best they can. And, but I think this budget is, is a good mix of trying to continue to maintain things, cutting out a few things we probably need, but not getting behind. And, and I can go for that. The one thing that I would like to see added, one way or the other, whether it comes out of fund balance, or, or the tax rates increased. And, and by the way, we can talk revenue neutral all we want to up here. But the fact of the matter is, is that most people, all they're going to see is that tax rate went from point five, what is it, five, six?
Six, one.
Point five, six, one to point five, eight, whatever. And, and they're going to say, our tax rate increased. And, you know, it's important to go revenue neutral. Revenue neutral's a better argument when, when you're, all your values go up. And when your values go up, people say, well, keep it revenue neutral. That's because that's a decrease in the tax rate, because your values went up and so then you can go down. So this is, and I've been part of, of those budgets before. And that's the way budgets were for the longest period of time. Matter of fact, yeah. So here, it's a little bit different to go revenue neutral. You're, you're raising the tax rate. But I, you know, that's going to, that's going to really come out that we raised the tax rate, not that it's revenue neutral. So I, I'm for, I, I'm for this budget. I, I'm, but I do want to add, one way or the other, whether we come out of fund balance, and then that's just, that's just my opinion. Whether we come out of fund balance, whether we bump that tax rate just a little bit more, if it goes to, if revenue neutral's point, what'd you say, point?
Fifty-eight, point five.
Fifty-eight, point five. If we raise it what we need to raise to get about $300,000, so we can give, so we can give a cola, and mainly try to work that to give the cola to people under 60, employees making under 60,000 in our county. That, that at least gives them, because those employees are going to get pulled in other directions. And they're going to get pulled towards Buncombe. And whether we like it or not, we have to compete with Buncombe County. And they're growing and they have money and they're going to pull our well-trained employees. And so I, I think we have to look at that to prepare to say what kind, that goes to what kind of services we want to provide. And I think we want to provide good services. I also see our county as a whole as improving over the next year. I think Buncombe's seen a real improvement and ours is lagged, but I think we will see more and more over the next year or two. And so unfortunately, because we see that improvement and probably more people moving here and more structures being completed and, I mean, started and completed, we're going to see more of a demand of, of services on our Haywood County employees as well. And so I, I think that's another reason to, to maintain and, and keep them and make sure, not necessarily that they're happy, but they see that, that we're doing something to try to take care, take care of them. That, that's my opinion on this. And I think I, I might have, yeah. We've got four minutes left before we change the tape, so.
Is there any way we can go back to the revenue neutral the other direction? Can we change that now, Ira? Seems like it'd be a little funner that way.
If our revale would have been up, it would have.
That's David Francis's far right.
When I, when I, you know, come on the board in 2010, we'd done the revale and ended up having to go revenue neutral. But, but we've tried, we tried to hold the line, you know, and then what, two, three years ago, it, it caught up with us again. And that's when we had to, to bump it a little bit. And then, you know, we've, we've, we've tried to hold the line again. And, and our problem has been, is we've not seen much growth in order to, you know, to relieve some of this pressure that we have. And, you know, we have pressure every year just from basically cost of doing business increases, you know, where we've done the merit increases and health insurance and retirements and stuff like that. And, and being in business for myself, you know, I know on a smaller scale of what the county has been through, especially with the 2008, 2009 downfall and everything. You know, I had to tighten my belt for several years and was not able to maintain or, you know, barely maintain equipment, barely, you know, had to keep wages low or whatever just to get by. And, and, you know, it, it's caught up with me. And, you know, so I'm having to spend money and trying to find additional funds to get out there and, and do what I've got to do. So, you know, I, I think our problem is that we've got a negative revale. And, and, you know, we've got, we've got issues and we've got things that we, we as commissioners have to look at to maintain our county and keep this county growing and moving. And, and, you know, so, you know, I, I really would hope that we wouldn't have to even consider revenue neutral. There, there would have been enough there in order to do what we needed to do. But obviously, it's not. So, you know, I, I also have the concern about the employees. You know, I, I felt when we've had several conversations about this budget and planning and doing everything, that if we couldn't, if we, if we could get the necessary things done this year, that maybe next year, you know, we could focus on the employees. You've made a, a, a comment about potentially looking at, I don't know how much we're looking at as far as that due to, to look at the, you know, fund balance again. You know, so I think we're just, it's, it's a tough decision. It's, I don't know that, since I've been on this board, we haven't had a tough decision when it comes down to the budget. And unfortunately, we're, we're faced with a negative revale and that's made it even that more difficult. So.
Okay. With that, I'm going to take a break for about five minutes and change that tape. So if anybody needs to get anything done for five minutes, then we'll come right back.[1021.66]